Okay, welcome everybody and we will call our public safety meeting for March to order. Let's see, we've got, well first can I get a motion to approve our minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Okay, motion carries. All right, in the packet we've got updates on photo read, police ombudsman, sit lie update, strategic initiatives update, and traffic citation for those interested in those. But we'll start off really quick with Rick Giddings for the NAPA parts proposal and we'll just get that cleared off of here. And so I don't know if there's a lot to go over, I think you've kind of commented on this a little bit before, so I'll leave it.
Yeah, we briefed this at a study session earlier, some of you had to leave during that, so I don't know how much detail you want me to go in on this, but we would like to partner with NAPA to manage our parts room and so that we can kind of free up some productive positions to do some things that we really need to have done in fleet, save us some money and kind of do a better job at what we're doing, so.
So I do have a question, have there been discussions with local 270, the unions regarding the employees?
Yes, we did meet with Joe and Natalie, fairly favorable conversation there. We had a meeting set up with them last Thursday, but they had to reschedule, so we're going to have a meeting with HR 270, just a follow-up meeting to address any questions that may have come up since then, but we have been in communication with them through the whole process.
And once you meet with them, can you share that information back to us, just to make me feel better that employees are being thought of and the union is being listened to, they have concerns?
Absolutely, and I think I mentioned this before, the reason that we're having this conversation now is because with some retirements in our parts room, this is a time that we can do this and have minimal, in fact, I would consider it a positive impact on our workforce.
Right, and we talked about that and that's what I remember about it, and then I thought, oh, I just didn't know if the Joe and his group were brought into the discussion and if they're okay with it.
Yeah, absolutely, and we're talking with him on a fairly ongoing basis.
Just any unintended consequences that I might not be thinking about would be, okay.
All right, anything else?
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Kinnear has agreed to sponsor this, there's no sponsor listed, she's agreed.
Okay.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, well let's move to our Historic Landmarks Commission interview, and I don't know, are they present, oh, here we go, Nick Reynolds?
Yes, hello.
Okay, well, thanks for being here and joining us, you want to just give us just a quick overview of your background and just kind of why you're pursuing the appointment?
Sure, thanks so much for asking, my name is Nick Reynolds, I've lived in Spokane since 2005, and in the Cliff Canyon neighborhood since 2007, had a dream to, very much enjoy that neighborhood, tree-lined streets and old historic homes, and had a dream to eventually own a historic home of my own someday, which I took on in 2020, I called it the COVID project, and was able to get that home individually listed, and then, right out of that effort, transitioned into an effort to support and advocate for the Cannon Street Car Suburb Historic District in my neighborhood, and with a small group of neighbors, tried to inform our neighbors as to what's going on, and that whole process kind of ignited in me a passion for preservation and also an interest in civic involvement, so I think it'd be a great opportunity to try and share some of the skills that I developed there and hopefully help preserve some historic resources throughout Spokane, so it's very exciting.
Great, questions?
Yeah, I'm hearing that you were one of the driving forces behind the Cannon Street Car District, can you sort of give us one of the reasons why you wanted to preserve that, what was your motivation behind it?
Yeah, it's a great question, and I'll share a full bit later today when you guys take up the issue, but you know, it's a historic neighborhood, in fact, it was the second oldest neighborhood in Spokane, first grew through the streetcar that came up the hill, and I think everyone that lives there, whether you own, rent, or an investor, we have all of those groups there, it's a very dense neighborhood with multifamily housing as well, I think people appreciate the fact that it is a historic district, tree-lined streets, cobble streets still exist in the neighborhood, and the train tracks are still there from the streetcar, and so it was just a great opportunity to kind of have that area recognized, similar to what happened in Brown's addition in 2019, so that was a great, it was very exciting, I'm glad to have been a part of it and help advocate for that.
Okay, other questions? Go ahead.
I just want to thank you for doing that, because I'm the one that sponsored that historic overlay back in 2018, 2017, whenever it was, so I'm very passionate about that too, what do you see going forward as your role, especially after, when you join the commission, what are some things, have you thought of anything that you'd like to tackle?
I know there's three major areas of focus, according to the bylaws for the Landmarks Commission, you know, review, listings and nominations for properties, special evaluation, and then design review, I think the big opportunity in the city is to try and protect the historic resources that are there, and try and help inform and educate members of the community as to what these resources are and the importance of them, because there's incentives available to help aid in preservation and restoration efforts for some of those homes, I think the big risk and the big challenge is once those resources are gone or destroyed, we can't get them back, so I think that's probably the big challenge and the opportunity if that helps.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, well, thank you so much for being here, and is this tonight that we're considering this?
I think so.
So we'll be considering it tonight, you don't need to be here or come down, and we'll let you know after tonight.
Thanks, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, just an FYI on our agenda, the discussion with the scraps director is going to be moved likely to May or June, unfortunately, they had some staffing issues and the director was not able to be in attendance today, so look forward to that, I know we have questions and would like to get to know the new director. SPD, can we have Chief Mydl come up and give us your update, and we've got a couple other SPD-related items on here as well.
Excellent, thank you Chair Cathcart, members of the City Council, I want to take a minute, take some of my time to talk about a program we're going to ask the council if they would be willing to support, this is, so this is a Dolan Consulting Group, Dolan Consulting Group puts on training across the nation for law enforcement, they do, the webinars have become very popular, one of the things they do is two-hour, four-hour, and multiple-day webinars related to law enforcement, de-escalation, supervisory training, internal affairs investigations and such, I reached out to them last year because I think their training is really phenomenal, but having an officer sit down at a computer for two to four hours isn't realistic, so I asked them, do they have capacity to break this training up into shorter roll call blocks, and I do want to give you a quick demo, if I can, I'll try to keep it moving, so they were very supportive, and they haven't done this across the nation at all, so it's probably going to be groundbreaking for them, it's going to open up a new door for them that they can do these roll call trainings, so if I can show you just a real quick sample of what this looks like. Okay, this is an example of de-escalation block that they teach as well, and I'm only going to do a couple minutes of highlights on this, so bear with me as I earmark the portions I'd like to show you.
Let's look at a scenario here, where together, we're going to debrief this case, and when we do it, I'm going to introduce to you many of the learning objectives I first stated at the beginning of the presentation, but as you look at this case, it's a trespasser, we've all been there, Starbucks, 7-Eleven, university coppers here, you gotta go get somebody who's trespassing, at least that's the call for service, so when you get there, the person doesn't want to go, you've got a room full of people, how are we going to handle it, well, here's what I'd like you to do, on your notepad, just take some notes, what went well, just think about what went well in this case, always be positive, that's a good debriefing, what went well, what do we need to learn for next time, then, when I come back, we're going to debrief, I want you to have in your mind, as you're watching this online training, to think about what they did well, and what would you have recommended, even based on some of the learning objectives or your career, what you would have recommended here, so let's get ready to take a look at this scenario.
I want to watch my representative, but I'm being interrupted.
Do you have to leave?
I do not have to leave.
You do have to leave.
See, the rules are, get up.
That if I allow bullshit in the middle of the crowd, that's disordered.
I was never called out of more of each other.
Okay, so this is a scenario. I'm going to be your instructor.
This is a scenario where basically it's at a university, and the person chairing the event basically asks to have a disorderly person removed, you see the two officers approaching, one of the officers, a newer officer, very good verbal skills, asks him to comply, the other officer, the more seasoned officer then steps in, kind of ramps things up a little bit, which is clearly what we don't want, so it takes real-life videos and it walks officers through the video, and it encourages them to think of different responses that may have been more productive, so if you just bear with me here one more second.
Online training program, I was in the law enforcement.
Yes?
The guy on the video, is he just presenting information or is he an expert himself?
So he is former law enforcement, he has this consulting firm where he will bring in experts from across the nation to talk about these different scenarios as well, but he really takes an analytical view at all of these things, and he uses his 20 years of experience from an agency back east to talk through what went well, what didn't go well, what are some things that we can do so that when our officers come across these scenarios, they can respond in a more effective manner as well, and there's, I wanted to show you one more, but this is working differently on this computer than it did on mine at my desk, so anyways, so this will be, if you look, you can see all of the different, all the different library sources they have here, and he's offering 80 to 100 this year, 10-minute blocks, he has about 80 from the prior years, each of the prior years as well, and it breaks down, again, everything from de-escalation to implicit bias to the supervision, supervision liability, everything we want all of our officers to know, but because of our limited training capacity, we do three in-service a year, and also when you learn something in one block every quarter, it's easy to forget that, what this would do would be multiple times a week, we would send out these 10-minute videos using real-life examples of what went well and what could have been handled a little differently, so I apologize, this is not working as it did on my desktop, but it's $11,900 for two years, and I know we have some police reform money that was given to the city of Spokane as well, and we have some more coming as well, and I'd be happy to go into this in more detail as well, if I can, next time I'll try to see why it's not working on this computer, but it was on mine, but it's, like I said, it's a whole library of different videos that I think would be very effective, because they're 10-minute blocks, they're bite-sized blocks, they're played repeatedly through the year, all of our commission officers would watch them, and when you're looking at this contract, he will produce a minimum of 12 10-minute roll call clips per month for $11,900 for two-year access, it's for the entire agency including new hires, and it allows access to the library of their recorded interviews as well, and that's for the two-to-four hour webinars, but again, this is something that will take our training to a new level, instead of just having the three in-service a year, it is bite-sized pieces multiple times a week as well, and again, I apologize, I wasn't able to get this to work.
I guess what's the follow-up or the follow-through on it, so they watch the video, they think about it, they maybe document their thoughts, but what happens after that?
The conversations at roll calls, we would have the sergeant or the shift commander's lead conversations about what went well, what didn't go well, and also what do you do, and again, I didn't show that whole video, but what is something you as an officer can do if you see another officer becoming over-invested in that call, and they're allowing themselves to get pulled into it emotionally, what is something we as an officer standing there watching this unfold can do to intervene, it does have, again, more webinars on intervention and things of that nature as well.
Questions?
Is this something you would see like as a group watching at a roll call, or it's something that they watch at home the night before, then they discuss it at roll call that day?
The intent would be to have this at the roll calls for group discussions.
Okay, questions?
Well, I would, thank you for that Chief, video learning is always about retention, even though you watch it and you have a discussion, how much really is that process and in this particular line of work to be incorporated into it, so I guess I would need probably to have some data or something to show me about retention of the knowledge that you have watched in these 10-minute clips going forward, even though there is discussion afterwards, so.
Yeah, and again, just to clarify, this would supplement the 24 hours of in-service that we're already doing as well, this would reinforce the high points as well, and again, this is something I think that we all want, we want our officers to be better trained, and we want them to think about these scenarios before they find themselves in those scenarios as well.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think this could be really helpful, do you, do we as an agency ever do that with our own body cam footage, say, here was a situation that happened, what are the things that we could do, is that anything that we break down our own tape?
We can and we have on occasion at in-service training, we absolutely do, one of the things we also try to do as well though is at those times where we've seen officers do something that we prefer they not do, and there's oftentimes sanctions associated that, we don't want to embarrass one of our own officers, so this allows us, and again, I need to make that clear, that we have done this on occasion as well, even when we've seen things go the direction we don't want them to go, but this would again, just be one more tool in our toolbox for that training.
And we have done that in the PAC meetings as well, gone over body cam footage and of events and things, and thought that through, anything else, more updates?
You know, I know we're going to talk about traffic citations, and we got a whole slew of things on the agenda, so I'm happy to free up my time and we can talk more in depth when those pop up.
Do we have another place for the traffic citations, or is this the time?
I thought this was it.
I think this is the time we're looking at on traffic citations.
Oh, okay, yes, welcome to, any questions about the citations, I know we forwarded that to you.
I have some, if I might.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Do you have numbers, and I recall we were going to do a pilot on the new equipment, do we have that in place yet, have it, if we don't, has it been purchased, if it's been purchased, do we have an expectation of its arrival time, I did that backward, but.
Absolutely.
I just need to know, how are we doing on this, because people are asking us, and I have no answer for them.
So, oh, thank you, yeah, I was going to pull up the email, but if Shay can get us the actual numbers, that would be helpful, so a couple things too, and I'll ask Major McNabb to come up as well, so when it comes to the moving radars, we requested funding from the traffic calming funds for the moving radars, we're going to do it under a pilot program, so I believe about 10 of those were authorized, my understanding is, the council said we need to take that to the traffic calming committee, Major Olson asked if he needed to be there and he was told he had not been, so I have not heard any results back yet from the traffic calming committee whether that funding was approved or not, so that's what we were waiting on.
Okay, okay, so I'm looking at the numbers here, is 1,025 total tickets, can you give me some, compared to last year, doesn't look like it's about the same, and so I'm wondering if, is that, does that meet your expectation, is that something you're okay with, do you want?
No, I mean, I know you all have been to the neighborhood council meetings, as have I, and we know traffic is one of the number-one complaints we hear from folks, so as the council knows, when we looked at this new patrol configuration and the number of vacancies we have, we pulled our traffic officers back, the hope was is that's only temporary until we can fill some of our other vacancies, so when you're looking at the total traffic tickets, I compared last year to this year, they're fairly comparable, even though the traffic officers are back on patrol, helping to supplement our numbers there.
Did we just, was that when the, but Traffic Patrol was disbanded another time too, so I'm wondering if last year was the same level of?
No, that's a, and that's a good question, they were disbanded in temporarily reassigned patrol fall of '21, and then by winter, we brought them back.
So by January, or is it later in the?
Correct, by January of '22, they were back, yeah, so, Councilman Kinnear, to answer your question, yeah, we absolutely would love more resources, I think the moving radars, if we can figure out if the traffic calming committee approved that funding for those moving radars, get that pilot program up and running, and then we're also, Major McNabb has another proposal that has proven to be very successful out in the valley as well, if I can have him brief you on that, if we have a couple minutes.
Sure, and, or you could give us all little, those little booklets where we could write our own tickets if we see anything.
I think you can do that in Idaho.
Okay.
To some extent.
That'd be great, I would so love to do that.
Anything goes in Idaho, so I don't know if you've been out in the valley and saw, Spokane Valley Police Department has these traffic calming trailers, there are, when you're speeding, they flash red and blue lights and they really get your attention, don't ask me how I know that, but it happens, sometimes they'll display a message, a special message, like the one I passed recently, said school zone change ahead, and so I called and talked to Chief Ellis about these traffic trailers, they're $17,000 apiece, he's got four of them, and I'll tell you, I live in the valley, and he's only got four, and I feel like I see those things all the time, so they're high visibility, he says the citizenry love them, there's a six-month backlog for people wanting to have these things put in certain areas of the Spokane Valley, they produce a report, so say if you got a citizen calling us saying, oh, the people are doing 50 miles an hour up and down my street every day, well, you put this trailer there for two weeks, and it'll tell you, well, no, there was, there was one person that was doing 36, and another person was doing 30, and then it gives you a readout of how many people actually slowed down when they saw the trailer, and how many people didn't slow down, so I think if we're at a time where we're having a really hard time hiring folks, and our outlook for bringing the traffic unit back this year, and depending on what our hiring outlooks look like at the end of this year, if we're going to be able to bring it back in 2024, this might be a good investment to mitigate some of the traffic concerns that our citizens are seeing, and then frankly, our officers are seeing, that they're just going to slow people down and get their attention a little more.
So you're familiar with us, I'm sorry.
Nope, go ahead.
You're familiar with us being allowed now to put cameras at around hospitals and parks, so that was approved by the legislature last year.
What kind of, red light cameras?
Well, the cameras.
Speedy cameras? Citation cameras, yeah.
Take your picture, you get a ticket.
Yeah.
And I, 20, do you want a 20 around? We were looking, I believe we were looking at 20 to put here and there and everywhere, and that seems like a good deterrent as well, we would only get 50% of the proceeds, so state would get 50 and the city gets 50.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that we're not, this isn't falling, pardon the pun, this is not falling off our radar, I want to make sure that it, because it's important to our neighborhoods, to our citizens, that we're paying attention to this, that's, so that's my reason for wanting these numbers, wanting to make sure that we're being really proactive about this, because I know it's going to be hard for you to hire, and even if you hired right now, we wouldn't have traffic officers until next year, so we have to do something differently.
Yeah, so this is a little something to help, and they showed to be really effective in the reports I saw.
So how do you see this different, those trailers different than just the cameras with, that actually?
Right, there's no enforcement with the trailers, it's a deterrent, so it's.
I like the idea that we get money back, that's why.
That would be ideal.
Yeah, okay.
But from what I've heard, these are very effective, I don't know if traffic calming funds would be an appropriate source for them, so.
Councilmember Bingle and then Stratten.
Yeah, do we have any trailers that are similar to this that we currently use?
The city owns, Eric, I can't remember, is it four? It's some sort of cryptic sign language, I can't.
We have one and Neighborhood Services has three.
There, I guess these red and blue lights that fire up if you're speeding are hugely effective, and that's kind of a new thing.
Yeah, it certainly looks like a cop car if.
It does, it got my attention the other day, again, don't ask me how I know.
So, so these ones, again, are not ones that we're going to be using for writing tickets or anything like that, it's just to get somebody's intention and tell them to slow down.
No, yeah, exactly, and we would take our, we got a traffic hotline, we would take those complaints like we did with our traffic unit, and instead of deploying the traffic unit to that area, we'd set up a trailer for two weeks, take it down, let it charge for a day, and take it to the next spot, and like I said, Chief Ellis has got a six-month backlog of citizens wanting these trailers in his areas, different areas in the city.
I think that was my question, I just wanted to know the difference between these and then the regular, the ones that we already have.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on this?
I was just going to say, I think the ones that we have are older, and they're not very good at reporting, collecting or reporting data, they just flash, so a lot of people think, oh, they're collecting data, they don't, and the light thing is a new thing as well, we did, we gave people till March 1st to give us nominations, we've got plenty of them, Jeff Gunn is collecting them all for the various parks, and then Schools also gave us a bunch, we'll be looking at that, and also our traffic calming meeting, we had it this month, but it was somewhat hijacked by another report, so we didn't get to the thing, but we will get to that, but it was the bike lane maintenance project that we spent almost all our time on, so we'll get back to you on that.
Great, happy to work on next steps. Perfect, okay, anything else Chief?
I had a question for Chief real quick.
Okay.
Chief, Councilmember Bingle keeps talking to me about the need to hire more officers and funding more officers, I believe I hear a lot, the number of 70 more officers, if we could secure that funding, I was just wondering, if we were to allocate funding for 70 more officers, would we even be able to hire them in the near term?
So it's going to take a team effort, and by that I mean, we're going to, we would need council's support to help us become a more attractive agency, so when you're looking at, when you're talking with our academy staff, one thing that interested applicants potentially look at, obviously salary, the other thing, and this is going to be something that will come out in our strategic plan that Shawna Ernst put together, take-home cars is a huge recruitment tool, and it's a huge retention tool, and we have lost multiple people to the sheriff's office because they have take-home cars, and we look around our jurisdiction, we are one of the only agencies in our jurisdiction that doesn't have take-home cars, so I. And we look around our jurisdiction, we are one of the only agencies in our jurisdiction that doesn't have take-home cars, so I tell you that, because we will be a much more attractive department for folks to come to if we can, can work on take-home cars, which is, I understand, a big chunk of money. But that's what we're going to need to, to get those ranks filled as quickly as we would like to, because we are behind with our counterparts in this region as well. So, if we can, if we can help in some of those areas that other agencies have already instituted, I think you'll see that we will be more successful in recruitment. The sheriff's office, I'll give you an example, they, they are crushing us with laterals. They just are. And one of the reasons that we're hearing is the take-home vehicles is a, is a big deal for folks. And again, you've all heard me say this, it's, if you're in a, in office that's four and a half feet wide, and you have to share it with three other people, that's what sharing a patrol car is like for these folks as well.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, some of the current concerns that we might have up here are that, you know, we added an academy, and we weren't able to fill it with the 10 slots. You know, we were only able to get six or seven in there. But at the annual award ceremony, you had mentioned how many hundreds of people were, were applying for this. And so, if we were, again, let's say things were equal, we, we had take-home vehicles, we had the proper recruiting tools necessary to get people to choose us over the county, for example, do you have any doubt in your mind that we could fill the academies necessary to get, to say, add 70 cops over the next, you know, seven to 10 years?
Not at all, no problems at all with that. I don't believe we would.
And can you share that number? Because I think it was 700-something applications that came in for those 10 spots, is that correct?
It was right about 700. And again, there's, nothing's ever simple. So, out of those that apply and pass the, the public safety test, and then pass the physical fitness test, we're only hiring about one out of 20. It was, if you go back two years ago, it was about one out of every 10. But just based on the, the types of folks we're seeing apply, it's now about one out of 20. So, where we really have room to grow and, and make a quicker impact is with our laterals. And laterals typically take two to three months to get spun up, as opposed to almost a year for a new hire. And so, if, if we are able to increase the incentives for our laterals to come to Spokane City, that would be the, the gold standard that we'd want while we're getting these other folks through the, the basic law enforcement academy.
One last question on this.
Last thing, we have to move on.
Okay. And the laterals that we have, when they come into the, to SPD, they don't stay at the same rank that they were at when they, from the previous department, they come in at a lower rank, is that correct?
Correct. So, that's a couple of things we're working on through current negotiations with the city right now. And then, once those negotiations are done, we'll have to see how that pans out, and then we may be having some more proposals to, to provide more incentive.
And I'm sorry, but have we, are we losing officers to the sheriff's office? That's not what you're saying, is it? Because typically, I heard it was the other way, the sheriffs usually came here.
Yeah, it usually is. What we're, what we're falling behind on is the laterals specifically.
But our people aren't going to the sheriff's office.
We, we did lose one to the sheriff's office recently.
But not typically.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Can I just make a suggestion? It'd be great if we could somehow have, uh, uh, interview them. Why did you decide to go to the sheriff's office versus other, I mean, is it really cars, or is it, they like living in Spokane Valley? I mean, what, what is it? They want a smaller community? I'd love to know more information about that.
You are in luck. We have our recruiting, some of our recruiting staff here, they're going to be doing a presentation for you on a new RAP system, and they can tell you how those conversations have gone.
That'd be super, thank you.
All right, thank you. And we'll have Shawna Ernst come down, and we've got two on here. We'll have you cover both of those, and then we will have Jackie come up.
Good afternoon. So, we'll start with the Burn Discretionate Grant Program. So, a local Spokane resident, Buck Marshall, contacted Representative McMorris Rogers and requested a congressional earmark for us for police technology improvement. That earmark was adopted into law by Congress, and now is part of the Burn DOJ Grant Program. So, it's a non-competitive grant, so the $1.3 million is ours. We just have to fill out paperwork and accept that funding. So, the grant deadline is March 23rd, so, and it just opened in February. We just had the first grant webinar a couple of weeks ago, so it's a really tight timeframe. We made a list of proposals for using this funding to improve technology in the department. Everything has to fit under that congressionally adopted title, which is Spokane Police Department Technology Improvement Plan. So, we're lucky that's a pretty broad title, we could fit a lot of things under that. So, I'll go through the projects that we've proposed. One is to purchase a drive test scanner. So, that, it, it, this is the most technical geeky thing I will bring up, I promise. So, when we do a search warrant to get cell phone tower returns, those include things like GPS coordinates that can prove somebody was in an area, or disprove someone was in an area. And we use the drive test scanner to go out and test the towers to make sure that the data we're getting back from the cell providers is accurate. And currently, we borrow one from a company out of Arizona. We have to insure the thing, ship it up here. There's a three-month delay sometimes in getting the access to it, and then do that drive test. It's really important for court. So, we do that for every major crime case, every time we use those cell tower returns. Having a scanner obviously would be beneficial, because we don't have to insure and ship this thing back and forth, but the delay is the, the really big part. If the cell tower providers change something, they add a new tower, they take away a tower, they, you know, decommission 4G and just do 5G, something like that, it can really affect how those, those returns are interpreted. So, the faster we do the drive test after we get the, the cell tower returns, the better, the better for the suspect and victim in the case. So, that's number one. That, it's expensive, it's $150,000. So, that's proposal number one. Number two is to add $150,000 worth of cameras. Some of these, there's a couple of different uses. Our corporals and detectives will take digital SLR cameras out in the sea, out in the field to take pictures of crime scenes. Those cameras are ancient, so we'd upgrade all of those. There's pole camera, which is, it kind of looks like a really fancy camera on a selfie stick, but it lets K-9, who are often first on scene or early on scene, to be able to extend it up into an attic, or put it into a crawl space, to get situational awareness before they take further action. And, and then some additional wireless cameras and videos for our special investigations unit, so that they can better track confidential informants when they're doing some sort of drug buy or other situations, so that they can make sure that they're safe. Number three would be to invest in our training rooms. If you've been out to the academy, the AV out there is pretty old, and was installed by a third-party vendor. So, we'd modernize that facility and other facilities, basically get them all on teams, better, better screens and all of that. Number four is to invest in our drone program. So, drones are also very expensive, and they serve different purposes. There's some newer drones coming out on the market that have an extended flight time up into two hours, and those drones can be hundreds of thousands of dollars. What they would do for us is, in situations like, recently, we had a homicide suspect skiing through the woods, if you saw those news media stories, to be able to use a drone in that situation would have been invaluable. It also reduces the need to put a person in a helicopter, which is a safety risk there as well. Number five I'm pretty excited about, so, this is a program called Spider, and we would do a two-year pilot project. The length of the grant is two years. Spider is a communication tool. So, if you call 911 or Crime Check, you would get a text message back, letting you know if an officer is going to be there, and giving you updates if they're delayed. It could also give you some tips. For example, if you're in an accident without any injuries, it could help you, like, with next steps for exchanging information and getting the cars off the road. And that's the patrol module for that. There's also an investigations module, which, if you've had a police report taken, you'll get routine updates as, as to the status of your police report, whether it's been assigned, closed, turned over to the prosecutor, all of that. There's also a self-service portal where you can go and just look up that information yourself. And then there's a survey. So, the survey could be configured to go out automatically based on the crime type. So, if it is something like a collision or a burglary, you would get a survey after you're done, to see how we did dispatching officers and responding to your needs.
Shawna?
Yeah.
Would that be instant? I mean, would you have fairly, once you have your, your number, you could have fairly instant access to that information?
It's pretty quick.
That'd be a very, very nice time.
Yeah, yes.
Shawna, would this be a standalone system, or would it have to be integrated into other systems that the police already have?
Yeah, it does have to be integrated into CAD and records management to, to know when you've called 911 and when you have a police report. The cost for that is pretty low for that initial integration. I told them that we're working on moving off of those systems onto new systems, and the company committed to doing that migration with us for no additional charge. So, when we go onto Axon Records, they'll update.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. On the, sorry, I lost my train of thought. Oh, there's also a community engagement module. So, if we wanted to send out proactive information, people can subscribe to receive it, they have to opt-in, and they could get things like crime tips, safety tips, events, all, all sorts of information from the department.
Alerts as well?
They could get alerts as well, yeah. The next one is Axon Interview. So, we already own this system. We have seven interview rooms set up with video and audio recording. That goes up into the evidence.com cloud for use by investigations in court. We would add a room, we would make our polygraph room into an investigations room, so that they can record criminal polygraphs. They're, they need to do that anyway, and they have a real antiquated way of doing it. And then the second room we'd like to do is, we have juvenile interviews that are at partners with families and children, and they have a really old-fashioned way of recording and giving us the video. So, they have to put it on these external drives and transfer it to us. It's just a lot of work for them, and they're, you know, they're a nonprofit, so we'd like to help and make that better. The number seven is Celebrate. So, Celebrate is what we use for digital forensics across the board. We currently have two extraction devices. That's not enough to keep up with the number of cell phones we're asking, we're being asked to process. So, we'd increase that to four. We'd also upgrade to what's called Pathfinder in the cloud, which allows us to get into more devices, acquire more evidence. And then, there's, sorry, I should have said Premium in the cloud. And then there's Pathfinder for Teams, which is an analysis tool that detectives can use to look at all of this cell phone data, because it's a lot of data. So, we would...
But to be clear, none of that's going around, getting a warrant and all that, right?
No, it's always with a warrant or consent.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, because we're adding so much technology, number eight is to add some training dollars specifically for my team in the lab to be able to appropriately use all of this technology. And then, whatever the balance is after these projects are done, we would contribute to the Eagle Gunshot Detection System, which already has funding associated with it from the SIP loan.
Okay. Is that, is that everything?
That's it.
All right. And then, I think you need, you've got me as a sponsor, do you need another sponsor?
I don't, okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
And are there questions?
So, Shawna, was all these items you listed, being in tech, did any of these recommendations, recommendations bubble up from officers as needs, or you saw this from your position in technology?
So, like Chief mentioned, we've been working on our department's strategic plan. So, that's not quite finished yet, but what we have done is met, we met with every single unit in the department. And all of the patrol teams, we, we talked to everyone, and one of the topics we always talked about was tech. So, some of these items are directly from those meetings, like drone, the drive test scanner. Some of them are things that we have wanted for a long time, like Spider. The chief has really wanted that communication tool, so we put that in. Yeah, mostly, mostly from those strategic planning meetings, a couple of things, like tech training was my idea. Yeah.
One, one thing I would think about, if, if one of those items weren't to pan out, would be more technology around public records to help, you know, expedite, reduce staff time, that sort of thing, but...
That would be ideal if we could. Unfortunately, with our current records management system, there is no way to improve that process. The improvement's going to come when we go to Axon Records.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, the, it's kind of a long story, but we've looked into all of the options we could possibly think of. There's nothing we can do to make that better.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
All right, last thing, and then we've, we've got to move on, we're really short on time.
I can ask offline.
Are you sure? Okay, all right. There's nothing else?
No, do you want me to do the ALPR now?
Oh, yes, if you could do that. And then we'll have Jackie come up, and we'll do the demonstration.
Okay. So, we received a different grant through WASP, the WAPA grant, which we briefed you on Fall about accepting that grant. That gave us $50,000 for ALPR. We're, we, under the grant, it's for vehicle theft. We'd also use it for violent crimes purposes, or Amber Alerts and Silver Alerts. So, we proposed a location, different locations for the cameras. There's more locations in the briefing paper than we can actually outfit with the grant, but we're asking for your approval of these locations, so that we have a little bit of flexibility, like if one of them doesn't work, that we have a backup. So, we consulted with major crimes on locations that they thought would be valuable, and then it's also based on traffic volume. So, it's both, trying to hit both things at, at the same time. And then, we tried to spread it out throughout the city, so that it's not all in one area, it's not, none of these are really in neighborhoods, they're, they're on arterials to try to make sure that residents still feel like they have privacy. So, the locations are South Division and East Second, and then Trenton-Fancher, which is right on the border of the city, so you can see people coming in and out. North Division and Francis, if we can get approval from DOT, we'll have to work with them. And then, we're requesting the flexibility to put it like a block off of those two arterials, if, if we could do, you know, Atlantic and, and Francis instead, if DOT doesn't want Division and Francis. And then, Washington and North River. North River's kind of a smaller street, but this catches people before they go under the bridge by the park, where it's still two lanes of traffic. We didn't want to have just the one ways. And then, Freya and Third, because it's, it's a high-crime, high-traffic area, and it's also right near a freeway exit. Palouse Highway and Regal, again, at the border. Sunset Boulevard and Cannon, that's, you know, people going to 195, you kind of have to go through there. Nine Mile and Rifle Club, if you were going to leave and go to Stevens County, we would get that, Ingress and Egress. And then, we have had cameras on the Maple Street Bridge since before the SMC code was adopted, and so, we would continue to use those, but re-license them with this new vendor, so that everything's under one vendor. The vendors Flock, it's what the county sheriff's office has gone to, Liberty Lake PD and Airway Heights PD. Flock natively lets data sharing across all of that. So, by going with Flock, we get access to their information, and they get access to our information.
So, in looking at this, it looks like it's a little over $40,000 a year, but is that really the subscription cost, or are we going to have to pay that every year?
Part of it is paid every year. So, we're, we would do this as a one-year pilot with the grant, and see if it is valuable. And then, yeah, we'd have to come back and ask for a budget for '24.
And is there, are there other, I get the affinity with the other jurisdictions, but are there other companies that do this, and was the pricing, how does the pricing compare?
Yeah, there are, there's a lot of different companies. We've looked into about five different vendors. This is one of the more affordable ones, because they, they maintain ownership of the camera, but they also provide support for maintenance, which is something we wouldn't have to do. There is one that is less expensive, but we have been, we have tested it, and have found that it's not... that it's not great.
My other question to rub some salt and counsel members of opponent wounds of the other camera, like couldn't we use one of these cameras for this 29,000 a year one that we just, it seems like we could save $29,000 right off the bat with this.
It does some of the same things, but not everything. So the $29,000 one has all of the lights and is a deterrent. These are up on, on traffic poles, so not necessarily as big of a deterrent. That would be the difference.
For a little bit of money, we could put a sign and a blue light?
Sure, yeah.
All right. Well, I would just encourage that we think about using one of these for that and saving that money for something else.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Or could we potentially use some of that burn money, the burn grant for the cameras that council members oppose?
Yeah, we could.
Yeah.
We could do that.
Counselor Schratt?
I just want to make sure that I'm, I understand this. So you were talking about having cameras on the Maple Street Bridge?
Mm-hmm.
So Maple Street Bridge, if you're heading north, I worked with the West Central Neighborhood Council and they put up that permanent speed feedback sign.
Right.
So will that interfere with that or is that seen more as a compliment to it?
That is a nice compliment to it.
Okay.
Yeah, that works really well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just to understand these cameras, they only collect images of license plates, is that right?
Well, it's, they don't collect images of people, but they are going to be able to identify the color of a car and whether it's a truck or sedan, that kind of thing. But yeah, the goal is to get the license plate only.
So if there were other crime, like pedestrian crime, then that could not help with pedestrian crime?
Correct.
Or someone breaking into a vehicle or anything like that?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to point that out to council president.
Okay. Anything else seeing, hearing, none? Okay, we do need to move on.
Okay. Since we're under the tight timeframe with the grant, I'm going to go ahead and get started on that paperwork because I have to by the 23rd.
Okay.
Okay? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to see Jackie tie somebody up.
I was going to brief the Lexi-
Shay, you, you had said if they just do the demonstration right here?
Yeah. So you can get five seconds there just here in the center, the cameras will pick that up.
Great, okay.
I was going to brief the Lexi pole real quick. So we're looking at redoing our Lexi pole contract. We're looking at five years versus one year because there's a savings, a percentage savings to do it for five year. We've had Lexi pole since I think about 2016. So this is for a total of $273,316.30 for the Lexi pole contract for five years. So that was the first thing. Any questions on that?
I just, have we RFP'd that or are there competitors for Lexi pole? I'm just wondering.
We have not RFP'd it. This would just be a continuation with Lexi pole. We could do some research. I don't know, I did look into it a few years ago to see if there was really any competitors and there was nothing out there, at least at that time, that I saw that was comparable to Lexi pole and what we're doing with Lexi pole, but I could look into that again.
And just, I guess just to check with procurement, whether or not, I mean, this is a big contract, so it seems like normally we'd do an RFP, but if there's no other competitors.
Okay. Thank you, I will do that. So the next presentation is for the purchase, ideally of the wrap system. I'm hoping to use $76,300 from the money that we were awarded to assist with one-time costs related to law enforcement and criminal justice legislation from 2020 and 2021. There's a remaining $223,266 in that fund. So again, this would be 76,300. This would be for 40 wraps, which would include a helmet and you'll understand all this when they demonstrate it. And then it would also come with 200 leg wraps, which again will make sense when, when they demonstrate it. This system would, we'd be able to use this system when available and the more systems we have out there, so like 40, if we have 40 wraps out there, this wrap would then be used in place of our current leg restraint system when we're able to get there with a wrap. And this is just something that we see as progressive and we think it's a very good option for leg restraints. I'm going to go ahead and have them do the demonstration. You guys, do you have any questions before the demonstration or just go ahead and have them do it?
Questions? Nope. Go ahead.
Good.
I can't see.
So this is for somebody who's being combative.
Wait a minute. How'd you get him down there in the first place?
So they're going to be in handcuffs, okay?
How'd you get the handcuffs on in the first place?
So handcuffs on in the first place, specifically if they're being combative. First part is this ankle strap. Goes around here. It's all clearly marked, this side towards ankle, right? Put that up. This is already more effective than what we're currently using. This here, this part here is actually more effective than what we're using currently and he's not going to be able to get his ankles out from there.
Do you guys take turns doing this or is he always the one on the ground?
We've all been in it.
Poor guy, okay.
So council member Kinnear, to answer your question on the handcuffs, most of the time these people have already been under arrest, so they've already been placed in handcuffs and now they become out of control or for their safety, we're doing this to protect them. Then we will set them down on the ground to make sure that we can apply this at that time. So they're already being handcuffed before this is applied.
So they decided to be disruptive after the handcuffs?
Correct. Either disruptive or they're trying to hurt themselves or we're trying to protect them from, from hurting themselves.
And this stuff doesn't hurt?
No, not at all. So this system here, it's, it's, as you can see, we have Officer Cunningham, Sergeant Jameson putting on Officer Barker. It's, it's a system that goes on pretty quick and what it does is it just, it protects him or her from, from kicking, doing things that are going to harm an officer, another citizen or themselves. And so right now, currently our jail has this system, a lot of the surrounding agencies have it, so they're comfortable with it. So if we do bring somebody in, they are already familiar with this system and are able to remove them.
So he was pretty compliant. I mean, he's been really compliant.
He is being compliant.
Should they add some drama to it?
We've, we've had field deployments of this and with teams that are, with our teams that have been shown the wrap, we've had it on in less than two minutes with people that have been combative.
Really?
Yeah.
Again, we're utilizing several officers to assist. So we're holding them down to make sure that they're not hurting themselves, doing anything while this is being applied.
Oh my God, what did I say? It's not a newborn.
And, and what you'll see in the end here is the positioning of this individual, how it's, it's a safer system in that he's not able to kick, not being able to do anything and it's not putting a lot of pressure on the diaphragm, which other restraint systems have. And so again, they, they are, they're, they're doing this fairly quick and it finishes with this helmet because we'll have, we'll have detainees who will hit their heads against the bars in the cars to try to cause injury. And so we apply this so that they're not able to hurt themselves during transport. There's space in between.
Yeah, now what? How do you get up?
So at this point, he's not able to move, right?
Right.
So for us to put him in a car, we'd have an officer down at the ankles, shoulder. So just grab the ankle strap. There you go. And we put him in the car, feet first.
So now they sit in the back of the, the vehicle, even sometimes with the, the vehicles that only have the one seat, they're able to sit in there and not move around, not able to hit themselves, kick the doors, kick the windows in this situation.
Do they sit in the whole backseat with their feet sticking out like that?
They can.
Yep. Sit them in like a couch, or like you're sitting on a couch.
Probably not a Tesla, but.
No.
If anybody wants to come up and kind of take a look at it.
Lori, get yourself down there.
So in, in, in our single vehicle seats where, in the back of the patrol vehicles, some have single occupied, we can actually bend the legs down so they can sit normally versus laying across. Some have the, the long seat where we can set them across like a couch, like Sergeant Jameson talked about.
Councilmember Bingle and I just finished a tour at the jail last week and they spoke very highly of the system. They said it works really well.
Yeah, currently, this is not working great. Currently, they're not even utilizing their chair, restraint chair anymore because of the pressure it puts on. And so they're being progressive as well. This system allows them to, to make sure that the individual's safe while he's or she's remaining in custody there.
And so how long would you keep him in that?
Just for transport. So once we transport them to jail, jail would then come out and their, their staff would bring them out, medical staff. And if they're cooperative at that point, most of the time they would remove them and then they have their own system if, again, that person becomes uncooperative. Our hope is to get them to jail safely, unhurt, and then transport them, or, you know, transport them to, into the jail holding cell.
Okay. Could one officer do this on his own? You'd have to have, okay.
For safety, I mean, could, could we do it today? Yes. But in, in a real situation, if the person's going in this, that means they're either hurting themselves or trying to hurt somebody else. And so we would never train that way. We'd always want to have a minimum of two, more, you know, more better because that way I could hold his feet if he's flailing, whatever, and trying to hold him secure so that person doesn't get injured as well.
That's great. Okay. Other questions?
No. Make sure he's okay.
I think one of the nice things about this system too is it allows us to get them in an upright position from the prone position a bit quicker and it keeps them in this position in a, what we feel is basically just safer for the officer and safer for the subject that's in the restraint system.
And as you can see, this is coming off fairly quick, but it's not, the detainee is not able to put their finger in anywhere to pop things off or have access. It takes just a, a tool to, to push down in and undo it, but you can see how quick with a cooperative individual, how quick this comes off.
So if it's a, someone's experiencing excited delirium, is this something that would, that you would apply then?
If, if they were in a situation, like if, if they were in a, in a traumatic medical situation, we could remove it right away. And yes, and have medical staff there.
He was a very good criminal.
He was.
And if any of you want to be part of the demonstration, you're welcome, so you can see how.
I'll do it.
Always happy to volunteer.
Yeah.
We ain't got time right now.
I don't think we have time right now.
That's right, I might. I do have a couple of questions if that's okay. So when we're, when we're talking about this situation, in, in, how, how are airways affected with this?
They're not at all because they're not, they're, they're in a position that their, their diagram pherom is, is fully expandable, they're able to talk, we're able to communicate with them and there's putting, they're putting no restrictions on there. We don't, we can't pull it so tight where they, they couldn't breathe. That's not how this system is made.
And what are the physical limitations of this system when we're talking height, weight, size? What are the limitations?
As you can see there, it expands quite, quite a bit. So we've had some of our officers, we have an officer Richie Plunkett, who's a very big individual. We've had him in, in situations like this, all the way down to very, you know, small people.
Okay.
So it, it would work for anybody.
Okay. Anything else?
And again, just to reiterate, so we do have some trial ones that they had allowed us to use and we have at least three successful deployments where the officers have been very happy with how the system has performed.
Does it come in different colors?
Just, just, just this color right now, yeah.
Yeah. No purple for the Lilac City?
No, unfortunately not. Maybe we can work with them though.
That's right.
Councilmember Cathcart, I have you and councilmember Kinnear as sponsors.
Okay. Anything else from either of you? All right. Well, thank you very much for the demonstration. That was, that was wonderful.
Did, so Lieutenant Wool is over the academy. Did you want him to answer anything at this time about laterals or do you want us to do a presentation during another public safety meeting?
Questions from anybody while they're here, real quick?
I just, what's the pay scale for us compared to the jurisdictions around us?
You know, it varies depending on contract. Right now, I'm told the county's a little bit higher and we do interview especially laterals and we, we hire very, I mean, very competent men and women from other agencies. So we will talk to them when they go, when they choose another agency. Some agencies we can't compete with, out of state, different legislation, a lot of times they'll choose those for those reasons. But when it's a sister or a county, or a county so close to ours like Spokane County, we will ask them. A lot of times they interview us like we interview them. They'll look at you guys as council members, they'll look at the mayor, they'll see how people, how we vote, how we, how, what the, what the citizens are like. And then again, it comes back, believe it or not, to a lot of take-home vehicles. We were, I was shocked when I started hearing over and over again how many times of, but county offers take-home vehicles, that's this savings, that's this type of thing. And so we do hear that over and over with, with laterals that go to the county.
So I'm more interested at, just at the moment on starting pay for new police versus new deputy sheriffs. Are the deputy sheriffs higher at that or is it more at the lateral that there, there's a disparity?
I, I don't know exactly what county's pay is at, at, at entry level, but I know they're, along the ranks, they're higher than us currently. And so I would imagine that it would be, but I, I don't have those figures to, to tell you right now, council president.
Thanks. I think the sheriff's very pleased with their recruitment efforts, so. All right, if there's nothing else, we will move on. And Jen Saracides, if you want to just come down and do the housing navigators, we can take care of that and then we will have our track and canon shelter discussion.
Hello, good afternoon. I am here requesting to, oh, hold on, I wrote, printed off my wrong thing. We're requesting disbursement of funds to the housing navigators. It should be $506,000. Thank you, sorry, I printed off. I just realized I brought the wrong briefing paper. And that is an adjustment of $150,000 from the original disbursement. We're still waiting on the Department of Commerce to determine if they're going to do a, a de-obligation amount. There's, there's some moving parts happening with this contract. So for, as of for right now, the full amount that we requested to receive will stay the same until we get notice, notification from Commerce, but we were only authorized to enter into the $506,656, I think, going forward with housing navigators. And that will be from, from now until June 30th of 2026. And that's specifically to help folks who are exiting from row locations. The $150,000 that came off of that is going to EHF so that they can provide supportive services to match with this particular housing option. And I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have on that.
So the navigator, excuse me, the navigators themselves, are they specifically looking for, for housing or are they trying to connect them to housing provide, like what, what's the exact goal?
Yeah, so, so the housing navigators already have a bank of housing units that are available and most of those units are available to folks that have pretty high barriers, including high criminal background barriers, where they've already worked with those landlords to say, would you accept these folks? There's also a landlord mitigation fund that comes along with that. So they'll be paying like a, a large portion of the rent in advance and then having that additional fund available to them. And we're, it's anticipated that these funds will continue past June 30th of this year once the legislature kind of determines their budget and that this program would be ongoing through at least the end of this year.
So is the actual cost of the rentals included in that 500,000 then?
Yes.
Okay.
It's primarily the cost of the rentals and then the cost of the staffing to go out and get the rentals.
And then was there, or is there incentive dollars to, to, to get these housing units to be provided for the higher risk?
So the incentive is really that you're able to pay the full rent in advance and that you're also able to offer that landlord mitigation fund. So those are the incentives that we'd be providing or housing navigators would be providing to landlords to be able to have them rent their units.
And the mitigation fund, is that city's mitigation fund, state mitigation?
It's, it's, it's actually a specific mitigation fund that's specific to this housing navigators project. So, and that's one of the pieces that's still in progress where they're thinking it's going to be $150,000 and so they're taking $150,000 out, but then they also might be giving us $150,000 back. be giving us $150,000 back. So we're just kind of holding on that to see what, what Department of Commerce wants to do.
Just two things. The last time I talked to Daniel Clemmie, I think they were at about 30?
30 units, correct.
Yeah, that they had, that they were getting ready to put people in, and they'll also, housing navigators, I believe, will be presenting at the Urban Experience Meeting on March 13th, so.
Perfect.
Correct.
How long have they been in business? How long have they been doing what they've been, what they're doing?
You know, that's a good question. I know that they've been incorporated for some time, as to whether or not they've actually embarked on doing this for anyone, I'm not, I believe this would be their first experience.
And, because I went to the website, it was fairly non-existent, so, just want to do our due diligence when we're contracting with people to make sure that they've got a track record that is satisfactory, and that they have been doing this for a while, and I didn't see that here.
Yeah, and in this instance, the Department of Commerce really decided where they wanted these funds spent, so we did not do an RFP for this. The Department of Commerce said, we want to give these funds to this organization to do this intervention. We do have a robust monitoring process that we're embarking on this year for all of the funds that we support, and this would be an organization that we would monitor as well, to ensure that they're meeting all of the requirements, along with the monthly invoice monitorings that we do with, with all of our, our accounts.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else?
Do we have a contract for tonight's agenda?
I don't, we're in the process of building that, and I can certainly route that for approval.
But are we trying to approve that tonight, that contract?
We're trying to approve the permission to disperse the dollars, and then we would be essentially building the contract based on Commerce's approval.
And coming back to us with the contract. That's what I'm just trying to figure out, whether we're voting on a contract tonight, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
So I will say, in the past, I've seen it done both ways. So I have put things through and asked to disperse based with certain criteria without the physical contract attached, and have had that approved, and then I've also been required to have the contract at the meeting in order to have that approved. So I'm glad to do it whatever way. I'd like to move as quickly as possible, we just have not been able to build this contract, as we literally just last week got the finalized information from, from Department of Commerce to be able to say exactly what it was that they were going to be accomplishing.
I think we'd like to approve the final contract, but we'll do it quickly, as soon as we get it.
Then I'll definitely be coming back, and that will just delay the process, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, if nothing else, we will move along. Johnny, if you want to come down, and we're going to try and hold this as close to 20 minutes as we can, and then...
I have one quick question before Johnny starts going back, and I don't think it was covered in Shawna's, but the Eagle gunshot detection system?
Yes.
And I don't think she went into detail on that.
She did not, she just mentioned...
And I'm just wondering, and I might have lost track, did we already sign a contract for that?
I don't believe so.
I just want, there's a, in looking at the packet, it's like a $1.8 million SIP loan or something like, and I'm just wondering if there's anyone here still in the room that can talk to us about where we are with that, because that's a big amount of money.
Chief, is that something you can answer?
Just make it up.
So, yes, this was something that was briefed to Council, I believe, last year, and this is a program that has been used successfully in other cities, and the intent would be to borrow money from the SIP loan to buy, to initially buy the equipment. If you recall, this was also something that allowed hotspots in the area where it's located, so you basically, anyone within the vicinity of this would have in excess free, free wireless, and the company gets money by the advertisements that come out, so like when you're on Facebook or Instagram or whatever you're on, you get those advertisements. So they pay to have those advertised, so it would, from what Shawna presented last year, we expect the costs from what we'd accrue from all the advertisement fees would be nil when the, when the bill finally comes in, but we do need that initial money to pay for this. It does provide that wireless for all the areas that are around it, and what her proposal was with the JAG grant would be, any money not spent on these things would potentially be able to go to help offset that SIP loan.
But we haven't agreed on that yet, right? This is just a development?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't believe so.
I don't think so.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, so, and Chief Schaefer, if you can kind of condense the best you can when it's your turn, that'd be great as well, but we'll turn it over to Johnny for our shelter conversation.
Thank you, Councilmember Cathcart. Members of the City Council, Johnny Perkins, City Administrator, joining me for this presentation from the Salvation Army Revive is Eric Finch from the Neighborhood Housing and Human Services. It's our pleasure and privilege to present a brief update regarding the Trent Resource and Assistance Center and the Canon Shelter. The presenters will be Major Ken Perrine from the Salvation Army and Lane Pavy from Revive. Major Perrine will go first, followed by Ms. Pavy, and then we'll entertain questions from Council. I'd like to introduce Major Ken Perrine, Salvation Army.
Greetings. This is our 125-day update, and I'll just try to stick to our timeframe here. Just some quick numbers. We've had at Trent, 10,598 bed nights, 30% from the Washington State Department of Transportation site. Currently, there's 22 that are there living at Trent, and we've served over 31,000 meals. Canon, 3,300 bed nights, 33% came from Department of Transportation, and 12 that are still there. So a total of 42,000 bed nights, 111,000, 115,000 meals, and the average population is 367 between the two, which works out to be about an 85% occupancy rate. That, that's for the entire period, not for right now, but that's pretty good. Just once, a couple things went well, right now, since the last time we reported, still working with Spokane Regional Health District to mitigate communicative diseases. We still have issues in regards to that, but most of it's based off porta potties and cold weather. Guests are receiving more personal hygiene and clothing items. Currently, the staffing is, is getting better. We've had a couple sicknesses this weekend, but setback, but it's getting better. We've implemented policy procedures for staff and uniform training for the staff, and I'm told we're about to roll out the electronic version for the guest manual. I think the guest population, the morale has increased, or currently a 322 per day average at Trent and 80 average at Canon. We have better food now with the new contract, and showers are operational, so everybody's loving that. And guest safety has improved from the initial opening, it's still not where I want it to be, but we're getting there. Again, food, changed the food vendor, resulted in $2.50 per meal savings, so that's, over the long term of the year, that's quite a bit of savings when you look at 350 people a day. Guests wanting to get into progress in sobriety and stabilization are being sent out from us and other agencies, we have a lot of other agencies coming in, and that's the last part, we have multiple service providers coming in and doing a great job. Some things that we still need to be talking about is the lack of proper kitchen and commercial dishroom causes an increase in expenses due to the use of paper products and transporting food service equipment back and forth for cleaning. There's no proper janitorial closet, which, again, we're still working on that. Dog safety and dog hygiene issues are becoming a problem, and we're still trying to work out a plan for that. As much as I, I love dogs, we might have to go to a policy where it's service dogs only. We've had numerous dog-on-dog attacks and dog-on-people attacks even when the guests were given the proper safety material. So we're still trying to work out a plan there for that. Campus safety, we're working with the city on moving fences to allow for a better inflow and exflow of people, again, provide better safety for the guests, make sure everybody is there, is supposed to be there. Some ways to save money, so put that up there. Internal individual restrooms for the population is going to help with our, oh gosh, internal disease control and also just be better for everybody. Having a commercial dishroom will really lower costs on the amount of paper products that we're going through. A commercial washer and dryer for the bedding and towels is going to save, that could save a million dollars a year right there by doing that.
Which one was a million dollars a year?
About the commercial washer and dryer. For what we're spending in laundry, I could buy four commercial washers and dryers every month.
Wow.
So guest washing machines and dryers for guest clothing, want to get that, just like we have at the Way Out. And then we're having an issue with hospital dumping. We've had, which I'd love to tell you offline, we've had nine different individual cases that were really bad, people being dropped off with dementia, people being dropped off. We had a bank executive that was assaulted, and he was out drinking, having a good time, but he was assaulted and had like an alcohol type of amnesia, and the hospital ended up dumping him at the shelter, and when he finally came to, he didn't know why he was at the shelter. So, and I've got a lot of other horrific stories.
Is there, is there evidence to back that up, that they were dropping off?
Yes, so we're working with fire and with county health to kind of come up with a plan, so we can have a sit-down and talk about how to really mitigate that going forward. The good news is, there's a problem, we're trying to figure out a solution.
So is there a, a plan laid out for these improvements and a cost related to them, or?
So we're currently walking, working with the city on all of those, on how to make some changes to bring some cost changes there. The community engagement, our street-level teams have been out driving around, they're driving around in minivans, you probably don't see them. The Salvation Army, we purchased two of these vans, they're going to get wrapped here locally, and they'll say Spokane on them, have Spokane landmarks on them, but they'll, they're going to be used for intervention on the street, so we can get people in the van and out, over to the shelter, as well as regular transportation around. And that's the part I have in less than five minutes.
I, well, before, before you go away, a quick question on the van, is that something that's reimbursable from the city's contract, or is that separate?
Well, we, it's really a Salvation Army van, so charging the city for it didn't feel right, so we were, we paid for it, and then we charge you a vehicle use fee, which is basically a depreciated cost over 10 years. And the van, you're probably going to ask, how much is that van? That van, the one that's outfitted with the computer stuff on the inside and the other kind of stuff they need to put people into CMIS, that van is $100,000. The other van is a used van, and that is a Ford, they're both Ford, whatever that thing is, but those are new, about $60,000, we were to get, get them for, I think it was 45.
So I'm just wondering if, so you presented all that, do you foresee that this, all that you've outlined there, and with Mr. Perkins, that the budget that you've come up with is going to be pretty, pretty much the way it is going to be for the year, you're not going to have to come back for additional funds?
I don't, I don't know that yet, we're still, we're hoping that some of these things that presented on how to save costs are something that we can do, because that will then lower the cost. I look at cost per person per night, so right now, we're higher than we normally would be, because we have a lot of things that are not normal for our shelters, we're not having to go out to, you know, laundry and bring in paper products and food and that kind of stuff, so that does raise the cost. So if we're able to bring in some of these capital items, we'll be able to lower the cost per person.
Well, you mentioned hospital dumping, and if we were able to secure a location that would just be for medical beds, I'm assuming that would lower your cost as well.
Oh, that's a small portion of our, the hospital dumping portion is a small portion. My concern for them is, they're not able to transfer from bed or wheelchair into more, back and forth, or even into the restroom. We had a quadriplegic dropped off three times, and that was just really unfair for that particular person.
Quick question, just because we've heard it, and I just want to get your take on it. Are we, how, have we come to a middle ground where we're watching for drugs and weapons without strip-searching people, or how are we doing that?
So we had an employee that was doing something they shouldn't have been doing, that's no longer working for us, but we actually have a metal wand, not metal wand, what's that thing called?
Metal detector.
Metal detector thing, so that's how we're checking for weapons. The drug issue is, if we catch you, we're going to have a conversation, but if it's something that you just can't, you're not willing to follow the rules, then you can't stay there. Because really, we have folks in there, they're white-knuckled through their addiction, to have you sitting there smoking your, your stuff, it's not helpful for them either.
Right.
Hey, Major, do we have a cost per person per night at the shelter right now?
Yes, and it, it varies by time of year, so the highest we were at, we hit 130 at one point, trying to, we're averaging about 120 something, where the Way Out, it averages, averages about $85 a night.
Okay.
So, but this level of shelter would be more than, than a Way Out, because the Way Out requires less security versus something like that, so I can't guarantee you'll get down to $80 a person, but it's really pretty significant because the way, the lack of infrastructure that's there.
And what would be for you an appropriate number for what this shelter does versus the others of per person per night?
If all the infrastructure was there, and don't hold this number, because I don't know, every building's different, but I'd like to get it down to at least 105. It doesn't sound like a huge savings, but if you're looking at the population over the course of 365 days, that is a pretty big savings.
Are there any barriers to keeping you from being able to get the commercial washing and drying equipment you need to get, to get in there?
Yes.
Okay.
We got to do some redesign, and again, that's the city, the city portion. I know they're working on that, we're all working on it together, so.
Okay, got a couple more. How many folks who've come through the building so far have been able to transition into permanent housing?
You know, I think that's better for Revive, I can only talk about the ones we've helped. We've had quite a few, not a gigantic amount, we'll look at 350, but go to the Way Out Center, we've got some great stories for that, which, I know we're on time, but I'd love to share offline with you.
I guess my last question is, just the, the neighborhood engagement, when you, when you're going around in those vans and that sort of thing, one of the things we've, we've heard from a lot of the neighbors there is that they wish that the Salvation Army was doing a little bit more to, to help patrol the area for people causing issues, and so have you been hearing those same concerns, and what, sort of what is the Salvation Army, what's the, what's the plan moving forward with that?
So we have heard those same concerns, some people see us too much, some people not enough, but we run the same issues that PD does, and we're having a business meeting, I think on Thursday, to discuss that with the business leaders that are, that will come to that. Part of it is just education for them. I'll give you the example, this has happened, I think it was last week, they went to a site before, it was nighttime, and they tried to get someone to move on, they said no, they called the police, the police showed up, the police couldn't trespass them either because they're on their land, they needed to get ahold of the owner, and so part of this business meeting is to be asking the business leaders, at least give us a list of an after-hours contact, so when that does happen again, we'll be able to tell the policeman, no call this person, so that they can authorize the trespassing of this person, because we have no authority, and shouldn't, to tell people who can be on somebody else's private land.
Okay.
I, a few weeks ago, I was out there, and we talked about this, but the sinks weren't, seemed to be working because they'd been pulled inside, and it was harder to service them, and I'm just wondering, are the sinks being serviced and workable inside?
So I'm going to say yes, although we did have a hiccup last week? Yeah, we had a hiccup last week where the American Onsite did not empty the sinks, and nobody knew they didn't empty the sinks, so by the time we figured it out, caused a little bit of a mess. We got, we were able to do a workaround, but there was a couple hours where the sinks weren't working, but...
All right, thanks.
Okay.
Councilmember Cathcart, just before I bring up Ms. Pavy, I wanted to just follow up on Major's discussion about security and safety, so one of the things that we're doing as a continuation of what we're doing at the Wash dot site, is we have overtime SPD police officers working 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM in the general neighborhood around the Trent Resource and Assistance Center to provide what we're calling community-oriented policing. Officers are getting out of their vehicles, are going into a number of the businesses, introducing themselves and talking about some of the strategies and approaches to dealing with the number of the issues that have been occurring there over the last 30 to 45 days.
Great.
So at this point, I'll introduce Ms. Lane Pavy from Revive.
Quick, Johnny, on that, does that mean that the way that funding is going to be out, or the budget for those police officers, is that no longer counting towards Camp Hope, but rather towards track?
We would, we would, we would split that up into both, because they're servicing both areas, so we would, in our budget reference, we will divide the time between both sites.
I think it's important to keep that separate.
Yes, sir, we absolutely will do that, and that's important for me to understand what resources are being allocated, what direction. All right, with that, Ms. Lane Pavy from Revive.
Hi, thank you, Councilmember, for having us today on the day you decided to do police restraints. Awesome. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Angela Summers, I'm the Director at Track for Revive Counseling.
Just a reminder of the services that we are providing down there, we are providing them from about 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, so we're not there 24/7. There is a lot more that we could do, and a lot more that we want to work on doing in the future, and we're still, still trying to get some of the care coordination processes going on with the Salvation Army. Some wins, we've got all of our staff trained in MI, de-escalation, trauma-informed care, cultural competency, suicide assessment and prevention, and of course, our housing and employment interventions and other, others of our Behavioral Health Agency license requirements like HIPAA and fraud, waste, and abuse and those kinds of things. We've got all of our track staff trained in CMIS basic user, and then we were able to get an MOU with SNAP and Catholic Charities to get eight of our staff trained to do coordinated entry assessments. So we just got access last week to being able to have, to do the SPADA's and do coordinated entry. We are now running road-to-renting facilitator training, or we completed the facilitator training, and now we're running road-to-renting classes on Fridays. That's allowing people to get access to the certificate that helps them get to Section 8 vouchers, but also it's just a great thing to show landlords that you've gone, followed through with this kind of a course, even when you're just applying and you're someone with barriers to housing. We've also completed a benefits navigator training through BHT that's allowed us to enroll people into health insurance right when they come in, so we don't need any outside resources for that, and that's been awesome, because we can get people signed right up for their Medicaid or their dual plans as they're coming through the door. We have gone through a whole lot with Ms. Ramona on bus pass and engagement activity policies and procedures, so that we can make sure that what we're spending money on, we're actually able to get reimbursed from, and that's when we're going to kind of lay out some more activities and groups for people. And then we also followed Daniel Ramos's advice to hire a CMIS data specialist who we've been training, to really help the entire program overall between Track and Row, to make sure that, so she's getting half of her salary reimbursed, to make sure that we're really following the process that the city wants us to utilize in CMIS. We have some outcomes for you, we've been able to engage at least one time 236 people. We currently have 101 enrolled in CMIS. We have been able to permanently house 14 people in leases, which is wonderful considering we don't, we haven't been able to do like coordinated entry assessments yet. So, this is all sort of outside of the homelessness system of Spokane. We've got quite a few people in process for transitional housing, but we're a little bit afraid to pay so much rent for them because we want to make sure that they have a housing pathway before we just start paying monthly rent in a transitional housing program. We are in the process of gathering how to, how to track increased income in CMIS. So, we're starting with the baseline income and then when we exit people from the project, we're showing that there's an increase in income of the different kinds. So, we're in the process of collecting that so we can enter that correctly into CMIS. But we have employed 31 people who've come through Track and that's pretty incredible considering most folks coming into the shelter system aren't necessarily entirely prepared for employment or oftentimes in a need where their impairment or their functional limitations are such that they would need disability benefits. We've been able to complete 79 behavioral health assessments and we're still collecting data on how many folks were able to follow up with treatment post-assessment. But these are just sort of the outcomes that are required of our contract and we're.
So, Lane, with the behavioral health, with the assessments, how many referral options really are there out there after you do the assessment? And do you have a window of time on average that people are actually waiting to get in for the assessment?
Yeah, it depends. We're calling behavioral health assessments anything from a substance disorder assessment, a medication management assessment, a mental health counseling assessment, even an involuntary commitment assessment if people are being called from DCRs if they're suicidal or have intent to harm themselves or someone else. Christina, our SUD provider, has been really quick at helping people get into stabilization. Pioneer's been a wonderful partner with that and so has Stars Detox. She kind of has a little backdoor entrance worked up. So, we are able to get people into detox or inpatient relatively quickly for SUD-related assessments. And then mental health counseling, whether they're doing it at our agency or they're going to prefer a different provider in the community, we're able to kind of get them set up. I've had lots of conversations with providers, even like Dr. Lutz, on people coming in at this level. If you look at Mous's hierarchy of needs, mental health outpatient counseling really isn't until you've kind of stabilized a little bit in your, in your structure of belonging and your shelter safety and security. And so, getting people into mental health counseling in this state is kind of something that they would probably do after their employer housed for a certain amount of time. We really actually have a need for a psychiatric medication prescriber because oftentimes the first thing that needs to happen is stabilization. If we could have a budget for one, I actually have been interviewing a few and, you know, their salaries are like $300,000 a year. But it would allow us to do some stabilization in the shelter as opposed to needing to deal with that wait time if beds are closed in inpatient facilities. So, that can be a difficulty.
Can they get medical assisted opioid treatment in the shelter? I mean, I mean, not that they would get it actually there, but can they be in a shelter and be getting medically assisted?
Like, can they get SUD, can they get Suboxone?
Yeah.
Yeah, we would connect them with ideal options or we'd take them to the hospital. Yeah, and then they can take their Suboxone onsite, is that what you're asking? Yeah, for the most part, any prescription medications are fine, as long as they're prescribed.
Hey, Lane?
We've got four minutes left, just an FYI, so.
Quick question, anybody staying at Track can utilize your services or is it just people that have Medicaid or those kinds of?
Anyone staying at Track can utilize our services.
Anyone, okay.
Our problems are sort of coming from the fact that we only have six housing specialists. So, we have a good balance between case managers who are seeing people in like a process and then like the immediate needs that our peer counselors, our director, our SUD providers, our clinicians, kind of tending to as we're trying to get people into a process of having stable appointment times. And so, there's two things happening. There's case management and there's like immediate needs crisis response all the time.
Just quickly, on their prescription medication, what has been the process? Because Suboxone's a controlled substance. Who, who holds that medication or how is that, how is that working?
Might be a TSA, yeah.
Yeah, the shop there, they're responsible for their own prescriptions.
They are, okay.
Yeah, but we've been, anytime, so my next slide is, is the community partners we have coming in. CHAZ in Providence and the MRC with Spokane Regional Health District have been awesome at coming in and doing like street medical and helping with psychiatric medications as well as any kind of medications. And if they are enrolled and get their medications prescribed there, we've had people flying to go pick that up, bring it back to the shelter, but it goes to the individual. So, we have been helping with a lot of the psychiatric medication needs. We also have DSHS coming in two times a week. That also helps with that increased income outcome that we have because we get folks on benefits as quick as possible, as well as like food assistance and those kinds of things so we can help them make sure that they have extra food. And we're also working with Where Law, who's working with DSHS to help people with the SOAR process for SSDI and SSI benefits. So, these are just some collaborations coming in as we work to get internet into the other trailers that are in the parking lot so that we can have more source providers coming in that really help meet those basic upfront needs. And we had success stories and Angela was going to tell some and I'm just not sure if you guys, if we have time or.
We've got three minutes, so whatever you can fit in three minutes. We really do have to move on after that.
Do you want to hear about some people that we've helped?
Yeah, I just don't know who to, who to choose from. I mean, the, I just want to say that through my experience, if I can, the folks that stay at that shelter are incredible people. These people are resilient, they're survivors, they've had some, you know, lack of support from family, maybe friends, run out of friends, you know what I mean? But these are people that, that I honestly can't say I could do what they're doing and survive and be in, you know, any kind of state to work or, or, you know, be a productive person in society. And so, I, when I see these, these folks and their willingness to try, you know what I mean, and get better and do better and want to be seen and be a productive member of society, it's just incredible. It is incredible, their will and what they have. So, us just being there to be, you know, be alongside them so that they can learn how to help themselves and get through this. Because when they do get into housing, it was them that did it. We just assisted them along, you know what I mean, helped them get to where they're going. But we want to make sure that when they get the keys in their hand or whatever's happening that they say, I did this, I can maintain this and I can move forward with my life. And so, that's what our, our housing specialists and our, our employment specialists are doing for people.
And we've added some quotes on the back of the, if you have the paper version of the presentation, so you can read some stories. Another story that's not on there is about a gentleman who came into the Track Shelter and couldn't get housing due to his criminal history. And he was also supposed to be involved in, in District Diversion Mental Health Court. And he knew that he could get a bed at our transitional housing program and that he would stay sober at Track, just long enough, no, he stayed sober. He would stay sober at Track so that he could move into our program. And then we've been able to coordinate his diversion court program and help him get access to that through our Behavioral Health Services as well. So, it's just really cool to see our whole continuum of care working, you know, if people even are getting out of the jail and they're coming down, they're getting enrolled in our services. But we're continuing to do the stuff we do for the folks who are also just as involved in the process and, you know, being able to get people housed transitionally as they get through their court processes is just a cool thing for us, so.
Great, anything else?
One quick question, about bus passes, do you run out of those by the end of the month? Four of us are SDA board members, so it's good for us to know what's going on. It's just good to know the experience.
We can always use more in the beginning when our caseloads weren't completely full. You know, I want our staff driving people to the appointments and engaging with them and helping them feel hope and building them up. But now we've gotten to a point where like our caseloads are so full that if a person needs a bus pass and we can't give them a ride somewhere, we want to be able to just dole those out. So, the more, the better always. And, you know, we're getting reimbursed for them, so we bought like $2,500 worth of bus passes, I think in December and it's getting down there, so.
How long is that supposed to last, the $2,500? Originally, I guess, the idea was.
I mean, it just, it's, our policy is we give five a month to each case manager, right? So, and then when there's extras, we sort of have discretion. I don't know where we're at right now, I'd have to look with our administrative director.
You can let us know.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And if we could, I'd love to plan to just have another update on our next public safety meeting, committee meeting, so we'll plan for that. Chief Schaefer, if you can condense and try to get us out of here about 3:10 at the absolute latest, that'd be great.
Just for, just for a protocol, we're on 4.8 on the agenda, correct?
Yes.
So, there is a lengthy and very detailed explanation and briefing in your packet for the Fire Department's next program for the clinical management of opioid overdoses. It's a consolidated or coordinated effort across the spectrum to include Washington State University, the public health, regional public health and the Spokane Fire Department. Similar to what you heard about Suboxone, there is another agent that's available. Our paramedics will have a protocol to actually give because what we're finding in the field as, as soon as this morning, as recent as this morning, we will find somebody at second and division. They'll be unconscious, they'll be apneic, meaning they're not breathing. The longer they're not breathing, the more of their brain tissue that dies, their organs start to die after six minutes, that's irreversible. We get there with Narcan. The idea is hopefully, we're not going to wait for the Fire Department, we want the public to respond with Narcan. We want our police department, people driving by, somebody to deliver that Narcan. They deliver the Narcan, those receptors are blocked, the person gets up and we see them an hour and a half, two hours later in the exact same situation. That happens hundreds of times in this community and it's becoming more and more and more frequent. And what we've done is we've enabled, we've used all of our tools at our disposal and we've enabled the community to be able to help us, but all we're doing is putting a Band-Aid on a huge problem. This next step is best practice that is, has been approved by Department of Health, specifically with Dr. Joel Adminster, our physician, and Matt Layton, who is with the Washington State University School of Medicine. That will allow us to intervene. So, when we go and deliver Narcan to somewhat, somebody that's suffering from an opioid overdose, we can get them plugged into services right then and there and also prescribe them a medication that will be able to immediately take care of their withdrawal symptoms and get them help, get them off of the very dangerous fentanyl and the dangerous opioids that we see in the streets of Spokane right now. Yes, sir.
Chief, when you, when you have these engagements with somebody who's overdosed like this, do you, is there a contact with police to make sure that we can confiscate any of the additional drugs that they may have on their person?
No, sir, no. I, I think, I can't remember the last time I've been on a call where the police have been on the scene with an opioid overdose, with the exception of the ones that they've helped us with, that they may be driving by and find one. But law enforcement, that is, they're just too busy. And just to be blunt, they don't respond to emergency medical calls or overdoses just because they don't have the bandwidth.
But how frequently is it that you will respond to the same individual multiple times, perhaps because they just continue to have more drugs on them and they've never been confiscated?
Yeah, probably two or three times a day at least. And mostly in the downtown core. We track it, we work with public health, we're tracking all of that as well as the DEA and nonprofit across the spectrum. It's very frequent and, I mean, it's, it's the argument that you can do the same thing over and over and expect a different result. And the thing is, we're not moving that needle. Yes, ma'am.
So, police carry Narcan as well?
Yes, yes. And, I mean, we give Narcan out to as many people, as many nonprofits as we possibly can.
Where's that budgeted from?
Well, it used to be, we, with the exception of our formulary, the medications that we carry, it, it came in cooperation with Department of Health. They would be able to give us the single dose and then we would share that with the community. Now, that's, that's been removed, so they're talking about making it available over the counter. So, most often, they're going to move that to the private side. But we're still going to try to do everything we can to provide public access Narcan. I'll make it quick. So, again, very detailed, and I put a lot of work into this and this is, this is a pilot. We will come back, as I think I mentioned to Council President Beggs, with an ask because we're going to modify the existing deployment with the Behavioral Response Unit that we have, add the additional capacity for the prescription and the oversight and the study, the outcome study with Washington State University, but it's going to cost an additional amount. And, and that's going to come to you in a, in a request here in the next couple of months. Number 4.9 is from last year. It's just an update for the vehicles that you approved last year. Unfortunately, with the way the world is, we weren't able to purchase them. So, we, we're competing with the rest of the country right now with vehicles and public safety and especially fleet vehicles. So, that is an ongoing, my ask is only to renew your support so that we can purchase those if an opportunity comes up again this year.
How were we paying for those last time?
They're, they're from the initial SIP that was rolled over, it was incurred from last year. 4.10 is a Lexapro program, same thing the Police Department discussed earlier. We were not on a Lexapro program, but we need to be. We have a pretty substantial amount of concern with risk management and not being able to update our policies. The Lexapro program is a best practice. We met with Labor, reached concurrence on that moving forward, the money's been budgeted and it is available on an existing contract. So, we do not need an RFP, it's, it's available through a statewide contract. We'd like to go ahead and implement that program as well. And then the last one is a mutual aid agreement with Fairchild. We've had a legacy agreement with Fairchild Air Force Base that's been in place for well over 25 years, following the A-TRIPPLE-F with your aqueous film-forming foam that you usually see at the scene of big aircraft incidents. The challenge with the contamination of our aquifer caused the Department of Defense, which is responsible for all the bases, to rewrite all of their contracts. The Spokane Fire Department, many of our partners, the Air Force, have all moved away 100% to save A-TRIPPLE-F that does not have the carcinogen and the dangerous products in it. But they brought this to us, our AG worked with City Legal to adopt this contract so we can continue serving and receiving service from them. And so, it's just a simple update. But those are the Fire Department's updates. Any questions, comments?
Great job, five minutes.
All right, thank you.
All right, that is the last item on our agenda and so we are adjourned.
Good work, Council Chair, that's a lot of content. Yeah.